In the summer?
Yeah. All right, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. Everyone can rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to its republic, which stands one nation, under your God, indivisible, and liberate to each other.
Thank you. Kristen, can you do the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Bardas?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Chair Comptner?
Here.
Commissioner Stapp?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Here.
And Commissioner Woods?
Here.
We have a form. Thank you.
Approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes of August 26th, 2025. Are there any changes or motions?
No, motion to approve the 8/26/25 meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Communications. Kristen, do we have?
Just that you have the most recent edition of the Michigan Planner Magazine. Other than that, I don't have anything to share.
All right, thank you. Citizen comments. This is the time for items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak, we ask that you come to the mic, say your name and city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, moving on. Public hearing for PSU 0425, 3462 Greenfield Road.
So this is a pretty straightforward application. The applicant is just wishing to occupy one of the suites at the newly constructed office building at 3462 Greenfield with a pharmacy use. There's no drive-through proposed, and the zoning of the property is currently residential corridor. Pharmacies are a special land use in this district. They are not proposing any changes to the site since it was just constructed, so they're really just wanting to move into that suite. We did send out the required notices. We did not receive any phone calls, letters, or emails.
Okay, and so it's just pharmacy, it's just because it's a pharmacy. It's not like a retail thing, it's pharmacy-specific that makes it a special land use?
So in the zoning ordinance, it does talk about retail as a special land use, and we would consider pharmacy like a special land use.
Gotcha, okay.
I would note that when the building was originally constructed, it was looked at as a mix of medical and general office. So, one could argue pharmacy is a supportive use to medical office.
Do you happen to know when, when we saw that, approved it?
It was under the old ordinance.
Right.
I can find it.
You know, I was mostly, I was, I was mostly just curious.
It's like a year, year and a half ago?
It was at least a year, maybe two.
I was thinking, I want to say 23.
Remember, there were two of them.
Yeah.
So about the same time, though, don't we?
I think they were, back-to-back meetings.
Yeah. Okay, so before I open the public hearing, does the applicant want to come up and say anything? It's not necessary, it's just if you want to.
What am I supposed to do? I guess I'll just introduce myself. So, I'm Achrav Patel. I'm the CEO of Roan Health and Ivera Health. We are a healthcare organization, and I kind of pride myself of starting it from scratch. It started as a community kind of business, and then it kind of grew on a nation, kind of nationally. Thankfully, I still, you know, treat it as a community pharmacy, so everywhere we kind of put this pharmacy, we like to tailor it towards the community that sits in and serves. So, in this case, in Berkeley, you know, we would offer a lot of great services to the residents, including delivery. So a lot of our business is majority delivery, so actually giving the medications, you know, right to your doorstep. So, if y'all are residents, feel free to come on by if it's approved.
Thank you. Any questions for Kristen before I open a public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:05. Anyone want to speak on this? Sure.
Dan Winter, on behalf of the development. The unit, the 3462 property has become very popular there. Currently, it's half occupied with a massage therapist. There's a medical use in there with an RN slash nurse practitioner, a general office space, and soon to be a accounting CPA office. So, I think with Mr. Patel's, he would be in one of the 600 square foot units, and he does have a store currently on Michigan Avenue, State of Michigan. I don't know if he mentioned that, but anyway, I think with the fact that he was mentioning that 90% of his business is delivery, so I don't see any negative impact for parking, or, you know, anything that would upset the balance of parking in the center. So, just, that would be my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:06. Discussion?
I have a few questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Patel, how many people will be employed at your store?
If you could come to them, yeah, thank you.
Apologies, my first council. Max probably, so we'll have a one pharmacist as the manager of the pharmacy, and then either two or three technicians running the back office.
How many deliveries would you expect to make throughout the course of a day?
So, how deliveries work is we get it all ready the day before, or the day of, and then one batch of delivery driver comes, and then he takes that batch and goes off and delivers. So, how many? Like, on a, probably around 100, depending on the population, probably around 100 a day, deliveries a day?
But just to follow up on that, it's 100 one time out.
Yeah.
Not back and forth.
No. They would pick it up once.
And what would be the hours of operation?
Usually 9:00 AM to 5:00.
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, and if there is a need for a Saturday, if there's, if it's a busy store and we kind of beat our CVS competition, we'll open Saturday, but probably rarely open Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen, as far, I'm trying to look at the parking stuff right now. We feel like adequate parking is there for this, right?
Yes, so this was calculated under the old parking standards, which were a little bit higher for these types of uses than our current parking ordinance, so yes. And as each business license is submitted for all of the different suites, we do look at the parking breakdown.
Okay, thank you. Yeah?
Go first?
Yes.
So I feel like there's really not much discussion that, to have, because it's really already a use that's approved as a commercial use. And it feels like this would be, if not on the same level, maybe less intense than the use that it was already approved for. So I feel like a lot of these factors, for example, the compatibility with adjacent uses and compatibility with the master plan. I mean, I don't know how we say no when this was really just zoned commercial what, last year. So, I'm really struggling with, how do we go through every factor when a lot of these are going to be, well, it met it under our previous ordinance for commercial, and so try to compare it to a pharmacy? So, I'm struggling with how we actually go through it. Like, how would I, how would I support, for example, compatibility with the master plan? Even the staff review says, "Well, it recommends attached and multifamily residential," but it was our, it was recently approved for offices.
And these types of uses are permitted in residential corridor as a special land use, I think with the recognition that sites like this do exist. So I think for compatibility with the master plan, when we were looking at residential corridor uses, and still are for this area, we're looking at something where maybe someone is able to get some parcels assembled and really do something that focuses on the residential uses. I do think that the master plan did anticipate some commercial and office-type uses on Greenfield for some of the smaller parcels. So I think that that would fit still in there as supportive uses for residential type, residential uses in the neighborhood. There might be some concern if, for example, there was a large CVS-type use coming in. Then I think it might be more of a question, because that's going to generate more traffic, it probably has a drive-through. There's just more things that come with that versus someone just moving into the suite, impact-wise.
So, instead of comparing it, when going down the checklist, instead of comparing it to the old ordinance as, you know, A or B, should we compare it in terms of intensity of use?
Yeah, I would focus on the impacts, because really that's what the special land use is centered around. Are there negative impacts to the surrounding properties, and if there are, can those be mitigated? When we were looking at, like, for example, this is a non-conforming site in terms of some setbacks and different things that changed with the new ordinance. That doesn't really come into play here, but I do think you could focus on what impacts this business has on the surrounding properties.
Kristen, is our application, because it looks like the application for special land use approval still references the old special land use?
I will double-check on that and make sure it was updated. I mean, sometimes things slip through, we have an old paper application in the drawer or something like that. So I'll make sure those are all updated, but thank you for pointing that out.
I guess for purposes of discussion, you know, what are the factors, compatibility with adjacent uses and compatibility with master plan. I agree with the staff report that, you know, a small office tenant isn't going to have as, it's going to have similar impacts in a small pharmacy tenant. We all agree on that?
Yeah.
And then as far as the master plan, pharmacy does complement residential uses. Are we all comfortable with that?
I think especially a small pharmacy. We're not talking about, you know.
Like, it's not a CVS or a large.
CVS is not getting love today.
Just an example.
Alrighty.
There you go.
So similarly, traffic, it sounds like the deliveries are going to go out in one lump, some delivery. It is on a major thoroughfare. I just, I don't see how this pharmacy space would impact traffic anymore than an office space would.
Yeah, I mean, so if it was a medical office moving in there, we would not be seeing it?
Let me double-check the zoning ordinance. So if it was a medical office, you would be seeing it.
We would be seeing it. So really, anything besides housing, are we seeing?
I think there are some other institutional uses that are allowed.
Without special land use.
But let me scroll down and just confirm, but a lot of the uses for this building and the sister building, for lack of a better word, are going to come to you as special land uses, because this was just a weird period in time when a lot of these were principal permitted uses under the old zoning ordinance. And the new zoning ordinance, we really focused on wanting to take this area of the city and try to push that residential, multiple-family-type zoning. These just came in right before that, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit clunky for this building and the companion building.
So, how would signage factor into?
So signage is reviewed separately under the sign, a sign permit. They have already received approval for all of their signage, I believe, but I don't recall offhand if they needed any variances, but it's not something that you would consider.
The impact on public, impact on public services. Obviously, it was recently developed, so it has stormwater detention facilities as well as utilities. Compliance with zoning standard. I mean, buffering was already installed, landscaping and lighting complied with previous zoning but closely matches current zoning requirements. And there's no, they're not making any changes to any of that. Any one have anything they want to add?
No, I think all of the, all of the landscaping stuff, I would consider grandfathered at this point.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, that's true.
Impact on the overall environment, it must not unreasonably impact the quality of the natural features and the environment in comparison to the impacts associated with a typical permitted use. So, back to, we're talking about an office building versus a pharmacy. I don't see how it would have any additional environmental impacts.
Thoughts?
I agree.
Agree.
And I do want to clarify one thing. Any use but residential would be a special land use. But we did consult with our city attorney as part of some of the applications that we received for these sites. And since the site plan originally talked about general and medical office, those uses, we counted as grandfathered in under the old ordinance. Since this is a retail-type pharmacy use, this becomes a special land use, so I just want to clarify that.
So any retail use?
Or other uses that are listed.
That is not office or medical office.
Mixed-use, small-impact would come here. General and medical office were approved as part of the original plan, so those would be existing non-conforming uses.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion, it was just a weird bridge.
Okay, so then the special land use factors.
So considering the nature and character of the activities, which don't sound terribly impactful on any.
Inconsistent with a medical office. Right? Vehicle circulation and parking, well, we know.
Nothing's changing.
Nothing's changing. It's on a main thoroughfare, and it has sufficient parking. There's no outdoor activity, right? No storage areas that are being proposed. Hours of operation seem reasonable to me for a pharmacy, even if they go into Saturday.
Or even if they go later, quite honestly, I feel like the entrance is off of Greenfield. If, even if they stayed open until midnight, I don't think it's really affecting anybody, except those people that need that medication at midnight.
Is that in there?
Yeah.
Production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, I don't see any of that, public nuisance issues.
Agreed.
So this still goes as recommendation, just to city council, that's it?
Correct. Does anybody need more discussion, or does somebody want to make a motion? Yep, motion. I'm just going to start calling on people.
Yeah, motion to approve a special land use for PSU 0425, which is 3462 Greenfield Road, as a recommendation to city council, finding that it meets all the standards of a special land use, including compatibility with adjacent uses, compatibility with master plan, traffic impacts, impacts on public service, compliance of zoning standards, impact on environmental, overall environment.
Support? Kristen, do you want to call roll?
Yes. Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Stapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamame?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardas?
Yes.
And Chair Comptner?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 10.
So you're through us, now you just got to go to city council. Congratulations.
Congrats.
All right, I see, well, we don't need, all right, so now we're just on liaison reports, huh? Anyone?
The Chamber of Commerce needed to postpone their meeting till next Tuesday, but this Thursday is the Berkeley Public Hall. So, you can sign up still.
I think it's 30 in advance, 40 at the door?
Correct, yes, 30 in advance, 40 at the door. T-shirts probably included.
I think so, yeah.
There'll be, have some shuttles going about, and I think they are going down to 11 Mile.
Yes, there are some, they borrowed some skeletons.
ZBA meeting was canceled this month, so no ZBA meeting.
I hear there's four next month, though.
Is that, they're all saving them up for next month?
Actually, two, two are going to be postponed until November.
Oh, okay. Do I have any other liaisons or anything, is it just me? Well, now I get to talk about bootleg. So, the DDA meeting, the first thing we did is our new DDA director kind of outlined his 90-day plan of what he's going to do in the first 90 days. A lot of that is just getting things in order. But it's also the month of bootleg. So, starting on Thursday, we should see skeletons starting to pop up everywhere. October 5th, it will be closing the Dorothea Pocket Park again, so that'll be closed for the month. And on the 5th, we'll have our DIY skeleton, so there'll be naked skeletons, some recycled clothing, and hot glue, and eyeballs, and flashes, and all the good stuff to keep the mess in the park and not in your house. October 9th is, which is night out, we will have a trolley. And also, we are trying to get a night market together, so kind of like a pop-up artist market in Dorothea. If you at home are interested, there are still spaces open, go to the downtown Berkeley page, and there's a place to sign up for it. Then we'll have our ghost chase on October 17th, there's one team spot left. And on the 25th, we'll have our trick-or-treating, and last night, they just approved the Monster Mash closure of Coolidge, so we can have our Monster Mash. Very busy, especially. So that's it with that. So, on comments, the Greenfield thing has me paused, right, because, so, and I understand our reasoning behind zoning it, multifamily and family, but also, I don't want to eliminate any ability for anybody to easily develop. Do we need to relook? I mean, like, if I, if I bought the house next to the urgent care, can I make that retail? As a special land?
As a special land use, yes.
Okay.
I think having the principal permitted uses as the attached residential, right, which is, is the vision that was in the master plan for there, encourages that, but having the other opportunities as special land uses allows for redevelopment. But since they're not principal permitted uses, I think it, it makes it clear for people that, we're really aiming for this, we'll work with you on this, but we're going to have to mitigate some of that so that we can maintain the idea of having residential uses there. I think it's kind of the best of both worlds.
Right.
But we can always revisit it. We haven't had any inquiries on any properties on Greenfield for redevelopment or new development since the two offices. So it might be worth keeping an eye on how much we get asked, what people can do with the properties.
Right, because there are some, are there some retail, or is it all like office-y things on there?
There's not really general retail. They're all kind of office or medical office-focused, I think. I mean, it's not to say there couldn't be one or two that I'm not thinking of, but.
Right.
It was that massage that turned into an insurance that I don't think is there anymore with the sign.
Yeah.
Okay, and yeah, and I guess there's nothing else that's newer. I guess that was my concern, like, making things hard for a newly-built, newly-constructed building, but this might just be the one weird.
This one is definitely weird, just the timing, kind of bridged between construction when the new ordinance was in place, approval before it was, so yeah, this one's a little bit odd.
All right, then never mind me.
Kristen, has previous planning commissions or administration, have you ever discussed or considered preparing proposed motions for the planning commission?
I was thinking that, which I'll write that off so perfectly.
And I say that because, you don't make a recommendation, I get that, but you can say, if the planning commission is inclined to deny, then a sample deny emotion could be similar to the following. And then you would say, deny because, one, two, three, four, draw lines and points, or even put the standards where they could circle it meets or it doesn't meet, just so that, and I know sometimes we have conditions, sometimes there are additional things that you could put in there, and then you, you know, if, if the planning commission's inclined to approve, here's a sample motion.
Like a worksheet, almost.
Almost like a worksheet.
I love the idea of a worksheet.
So that making motions isn't intimidating, and it will make things, I feel like, go smoother. And you're not telling them what factors to put, you're just making it easily accessible within the sample motions.
So we do that for ZBA, and it has made a big difference for them, and I've done that in other communities, so yeah, we can, I can do that.
Yeah, I say, I think NOVA, they have like.
NOVA had like a fill-in-the-blank type thing.
It makes more work on you.
Well, I think if it's a fill-in-the-blank, right, maybe it's less, maybe it's not as labor-intensive, right? Like, come up with a, like, this is our special land use, right, these are the factors you have to do, leave a spot for conditions, right?
Well, I suppose once you create it, then it's, can be used.
It's a copy paste.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With, you know, maybe a section gets changed out or whatever.
I just feel like we all know how to make motions, and we all know what we want to say, but sometimes it's intimidating, and if it's all right there in front of us, it's easy breezy, and other people can type in to whatever I have written up.
I mean, especially if they're the more complicated ones. Like, this one was fairly easy, but once we start, you know.
Yep. I feel like we do a lot of special land use.
Or add conditions or different things, so.
For site plans.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely start putting some sample motions in.
Cool. Yeah, I would appreciate that, because I, it's like you said, it kind of, you, you know there's a whole bunch of stuff you got to tack on, but it's like, oh.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
For real, yeah. Cool.
That's all I have.
Any other, Stan, or any other commissioner comments? Greg Patterson told me to just tell you all that Monster Mash got approved. That's all that happened against us.
Oh, and they approved the second reading of the zoning ordinance amendments. You all saw last?
That apparently was not as important to him as Monster Mash.
So, those will be effective the 22nd of October, and I'll update it on the PDF on the website.
Did you say at last meeting, too, that there was another round of coming in succession?
There is, we have a second round that we're working on. It's a shorter list, so we're identifying less.
We've leaned it down.
But there are maybe three or four things, I think, we'll hold off. I mean, none of it's, it's mostly clarifications and things like that.
Which does bring me up to a nitpicky sort of thing. I know when we talked about this new ordinance, it was going to be very easy to like click and, and search and all of that good stuff. And it's fine on a laptop, but if I am on my phone or an iPad, it is not easy to maneuver around and to, okay, I loved that Muni code, I could put in a word, and it would give me any ordinance that might respond to that word, right? So I can easily kind of.
I hated NUCI code, though, because I am, I am a highlighter and underliner and notes in the margins and like Bluebeam. So like NUCI code, you'd have to like print it to file, and then you could do that, but then something changed, and then you'd have to go back and download it and read.
Yes, I guess I loved the search ability of it, of which, you know, what we have does not match that. Is there a plan at some point to make it into more?
I mean, you can do the control find in the PDF, and it will search for words and bring up all of this.
Right, but like a phone or an iPad.
To be honest, I haven't tried on a phone or an iPad yet with this ordinance too much.
I mean, which makes sense, because.
I'm at my desk, right, I have my computer.
Right, right.
I have my computers. I mean, I can look into it, there are trade-offs either way we go. Munich code has that great search feature, but then it also doesn't codify ordinances for like several months at a time.
Right. So I don't know if there's like a media, you know, like, yeah, I don't know.
I can look into it.
If there's another, it's just, and then I think of like the average person who, you know, is looking up, can I put my swimming pool here, or, or whatever, and they're just doing it on their phone, right?
Yeah, for sure.
And it becomes clunky for them.
I'll see what I can figure out. Maybe there's something, I don't know.
Okay. Does it not pull up, like, so it's very readable on your phone and iPod, or just it's not, that search function is the same?
It's the search function, right? So I would have to know, and I, and I am very familiar with it, so I kind of know where to find the stuff.
Yeah.
But if I was an average person, I don't know that I would always know, like, which chapter I'm going to find the information I'm...
Gotcha. I'll see what we can do for the search function.
Okay.
Thank you.
All of our chatting made it last thirty minutes.
Sweet.
Anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-one. I'm the fine art director for CRDN, and me and Roy are out here today, live cleaning some...